To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to motion that they accept the meeting minutes. A motion. Two seconds, um, discussion. Um, I have just one thing, I just wanna move where you're Randy, right?
Pardon?
Are you Randy?
Yeah.
Yes, welcome. Um, I wanna move him up above the old business. So we can, cause we could be talking about our ordinance for a while if we do will, so we'll kinda close with that. Hearing only discussion, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carried. Public comments? I open them. Hearing none, I close them. March twentieth meeting minutes, if you all had a copy of that from January. I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as written. I get a second? Discussion?
Uh, I have to do this one thing, the approval of the February seventh, twenty fourteen minutes. Twenty twenty four.
You finger went through the one instead of the two.
What did I do?
Uh, it says approval of February seventh, twenty fourteen minutes, it should be twenty twenty four. February seventh, twenty fourteen, twenty twenty four.
Oh.
It'd be time travel. So, a motion accepted. One adjustment, uh, changing the date to twenty twenty four on the February seventh meeting. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Dave, uh, country board, please?
Uh, we approved the meeting change from the tenth to the seventeenth. And I see you've got the rego down here, and then, uh, the treasurer resigned, so that position is open. Choice resigned, so it's posted, and we have forty-five days to replace her, so. The clerk will probably be either November or before, cause he didn't, or neither, so. But she resigned, they moved me in on the.
I don't know if you noticed it, but there is a special meeting posted on the board outside for tomorrow night at six. For the board, uh, about that, so. So you guys know about that.
Thank you, Dave. Um, zoning update, Dave Kelsey?
I had two permits, uh, last month, and one was at one zero one eight one Collard Road to replace the garage. Then at six three nine one Lake Shore Drive, they're installing the garage.
That's, that's a new?
Pardon?
The second one's a new one?
Yeah. And that's it.
Okay. Next, I would like to, um, just vote on the July tenth meeting, as, as Dave said, that, um, I think it posted in time, so we just need to revote. I'd like to make a motion to change the July tenth meeting to July seventeenth at six o'clock. Um, I can't make it to the tenth, so I think we kind of tentatively agreed to move that to the seventeenth.
One second, the motion?
Quite a second, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of changing the July tenth meeting to July seventeenth at six o'clock?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Uh, pose, motion carried. Uh, next we'll skip down to Randy. Uh, how you say your last name, Randy?
Wow, yeah, wow.
Um, wants to talk to us, um, about, I guess, some development? Yep, the floor is yours.
Okay.
I'll come right up there, if that's alright.
You can. Welcome. I've got some plans here, I got two sets of plans. Um, and I'm gonna, I'll just give you guys, and then you can just pass them around, if you want a copy, go ahead and grab a copy of it. But there's two, like, did some, two site drawings of it, that gives you an idea, like I say, you guys can pass them around.
We're just looking at.
Yeah, this is on forty-six, just prior to Pittsburgh. Right by forty-six here.
Prior to Pittsburgh.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah, we own the property, you know, fifty, sixty years. Uh, you probably don't cut new, yeah, so I buy from Clark several years back, I've heard an idea. Well, they, they, oh, okay, boom, boom, got it, okay. But that'll give you all an idea of what, what I'm trying to accomplish here. And my idea of this thing would be to do tiny homes. I know it's, there's talk in different townships to do tiny homes, I got pictures of them, and so I'll pass these pictures around to y'all. And, uh, if you wanna take one home with you, you can, I got, I think there's seven copies of them all here. But, um, but you'll see the two different plans. One of the plans, there's sixteen, there's sixteen lots in the, on this, on the plan here. And they're larger lots, they're from about an acre all the way up to like two to three acre sites. And that's the, um, the drawing drawn by an engineer, like, completed. And then the other one has got twenty-eight lots on it, from a half acre up to an acre, probably about an acre and a half on the property. And, but, um. And you can kinda see what I've done with the road, uh, and the road would be county spec, it's a county spec road. Uh, with, with, uh, we've already got a sand basin there, we've got gravel down with the weeds that grown through the gravel. If you don't keep it grazing and so on, people don't drive on it. Uh, but what I wanna do is bring into a county spec, and that would be, I'm gonna put crushed concrete down over what's there now. And then probably six inches of crushed concrete, and then what I would do is pave it, and the rule is that twenty-two foot wide in the paving part. So we pave the, pave the street, uh, uh, and then, uh, get electricity in there on the easement with a sixty-six foot right away. And you can see that right on the, right on the drawings. And, but I've got, I've got like, I think seven different copies, seven different drawings of a tiny home. They range from four hundred and fifty square feet to five hundred square feet. Um, and then a guy can put a deck on the front, could put a screen porch on if he wants, or if somebody wants us to build it, we can do that. But I'll pass these around, if you guys, if you wanna take one, I'll give you guys some here. But they're really cool little houses, and what we're gearing towards, what we're gearing towards is people, uh, like my age, myself. Two people that wanna live here six months and have a, have a little home and then go to Florida. That's what a lot of people do, that's what I do. So, and people, they would love this, these little homes. And then, um, live here for the six months in summer, is kinda what I'm thinking.
So what's the average size of these?
Yeah, these are four hundred and fifty, five hundred square feet, and I think you're, there's, 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 uh, a lot of these communities are doing, they're going four hundred and fifty square feet for these tiny homes. Well, we need to set a budget, and I've been talking with Marcy, between a hundred and forty and a hundred and sixty thousand, that would be the lot with all the improvements in the house, um, driveways, landscaping, and it'd be well inseptic, be well inseptic, soil is all sandy soil over there. Uh, some of them we might have foot raised systems in, um, but I've had the health department out there, and they think there would be.
Did they approve the small lots?
Well, that's one, you know, just showing you guys, I wanna go to, I mean, it's in the country, I get it, but, I mean, to, uh, to have affordable housing, cause there's such a demand for it, and I think Marcy would, you want, did you wanna say?
Well, I just wanna, I just want to make, no, I'm here, I'm, I'm involved as a real estate broker, not as a board member of Cato Township. I just wanna ha- have put that on record, okay? Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, no, no problem. Uh, but I've got several other prints here. But then, uh, another thing we're gearing towards is a young couple, just getting married, two people that wanna be, be able to get a home that they can afford and, 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 uh, purchase the home, and, uh, there's such a demand for it, and there's a lot of communities around the state that are doing this, this same thing here. But then I've got.
I have a question for you.
Yeah, go ahead.
What is your, what's your requirements gonna be for the capacity of the homes? Cause like, you're saying that a young couple comes in, so what if they start having kids, and there's two or three or four kids, and they're all still trying to stay packed in this five hundred square.
Well, then what they have to do is that, uh, I mean, these are stick-built homes.
You're letting them add on, and they're to make them beyond?
These are being sold separately.
What's that?
This is, this is being sold separately, correct? You're gonna own the land and the home itself, so.
Am I gonna have to put the subject tank in the?
No, I'm going home.
No, no, no.
So it's gonna be a community?
Right.
It's gonna be a community, with these tiny houses, yeah. And then, uh, yeah, every, it'll be on well inseptic. We've had, um, eight lots already approved for it.
I'll just.
For health department.
Yeah, I've got a question for you.
Now, on tiny homes, I don't know the exact definition, but I think that maybe, don't quote me on this, but I believe it's, uh,
it, uh, tiny homes, like on television, their own wheels, they leave them on wheels, they can drive them in, drive them off. Are you think, talking about having that, or are you talking, you just went?
Well, these would be.
The board approved.
Yeah, these would be a stick-built home on a found, on a foundation, just the footing walls.
Yeah.
Not a basement.
Yep.
Um, basements are getting pretty pricey, but then we've got, I've got some units here that, uh, are on trailers. But then we've probably taken off a trailer, and I'll show you some examples of it, it's, it's pretty cool. Um, but here's another tiny home, if you guys wanna, can pass them around, um, I can show you some of these trailers here.
So you wouldn't have transient people, where they come in for a week and pull it away and take off or anything, you're not.
Right, right, I mean, it's.
They'll have to be permanently affixed.
Yeah, permanently.
So they would be, right, they would be retorted as permanently affixed, and assessed, assessed as permanently affixed.
I'm sorry.
I just wanna make sure they know what you're saying, and what you were talking about.
But RV parks, we've done our RP, the, our RV parks with motor homes, fifth wheels, pull behind trailers. And that's becoming quite a thing now, too, people like to live in RV parks. Uh, in fact, I lived in one in Florida for six months, and, uh, and we enjoy it, and a lot of wonderful people you meet, and it's pretty cool. Um, but then I've got, when you talk about that, about these homes, uh, I'll show you what, there's some, um, park model homes that I've taken pictures of in Florida. These are actually, these are permanent modular homes. Those are stick, those are built in a factory. But I've got, I got, I got a lot of pictures, so, it's almost how much time I've got here, um. So these would all be, these would be on foundations, also footing walls. You guys are probably.
So they can't just hook up to and pull off?
No, the, these aren't, right, right.
Cause there's park models already on town line, on the lake.
Yes.
Have you been down there?
Yeah.
There's a couple park models there.
Here's more, you guys just pass them around quickly and look at them, uh.
Is that gonna be a private road, or, uh?
It'd be a private, see, what I'm gonna do, yeah, I don't want the county to know about, what I'd probably do is have the first few people that maybe might wanna take charge of the, like, landscaping, you know, who'll pay for it, or whatever, but, um, what we do is we, um, appoint somebody. And, uh, they would, um, and we would work with them, so they could keep the road graded, in other words, and plow, and, uh, maybe do a little landscaping. But the association, we'd set an association that was, that would do all that, that work, set it dedicating to the county. Uh, but it's up to you guys, I mean, you, you guys are, so that would be a P, or you do a PUD, you guys are probably familiar with PUDs. Or plant unit development, where you know, you have, you can have some bigger homes in the back and bigger lots, and then you can have all the way down to like a small tiny home. Um, do something like that. Otherwise, it'd be a site condo, you're familiar with site condos, yeah, site condos. That's a quicker way of getting a development done, Marcy knows about that, uh, and the different ways of doing developments, but, um.
So if you're talking about putting some bigger lots, and you have two different, like.
Yeah, I got two different plans here.
Right, I mean, so what is it that you planned, like, I mean?
Well, I just, I just, yeah, it's kind of up in the air, I just wanted to show you guys what can be done. I just drew a couple of different designs there to show what we can do. Let's say I can't get something like the half acre lots approved, these are all bigger lots. Um, I guess it's the demand part of it, cause you get, start getting in there two, three acres, it gets pretty pricey. And that's why I brought the size down to like a half, a half acre is a pretty good sized lot. And, um.
I have a half acre.
Pardon?
I have a half acre, and it gets tight when you try to put a septic in with a well. It, it does.
Yeah, I mean.
I put two of them in around my lake, and it, it gets tight.
Yeah, if you've got a pretty good site, I mean, this is a lot smaller home, too, so.
So, Tuck, have you talked to the?
You need that big of a septic system.
Have you talked to our health department, I want the minimum requirements for a tank?
Oh, yeah.
And it's, it's.
Yeah, but this is, this is the one bedroom home.
So what size drain field are they requiring you to put in?
Twelve hundred, sort of four thousand.
That's a big drain field.
No, it's pretty good size, great, but, but I, I worked it out, though, I mean, I made some drawings, and I worked with the township.
Well, I, I just, I had a, I had put in a fifteen hundred for my house, and we literally were at every minimum distance to get the well, the driveway, the lot line clearances, and then I had the lakefront, so we couldn't use that whole site, but it gets tight, and that was what I have.
You're right, but I'm just trying to make it.
So with that being said, I mean, you'd almost have to arrange these houses in a subdivision to the point where you meet all the requirements.
Right, right, yeah. A hundred and twenty, it's a hundred and twenty-five foot front, and that's what I would wanna do a variance on, is to get approval on such as that. That would be the lots there that are twenty-eight lots in that property. And, uh, you guys require a hundred and sixty-five foot, okay? And it doesn't matter the depth, obviously, but the, you, the requirements are eight hundred square foot home and a hundred and sixty-five foot lot with road cringe, that's what you guys require. But what I would like to try to do is do the tiny home on a smaller lot, half acre lot. I mean, you're talking a house that's sixteen by thirty, that's the size of it, so.
So where at around here, do you see that demand, I guess, or is there place near here?
Yeah, they got one up in, where is it, Marcy, um?
That has something like this as far as the development?
What's the name of the little town up here? Up the backside of, um, there's, they got one going up here, about twenty miles from here.
The Canadian Lakes area?
Yeah, by, by Indian Lakes, yeah.
Canadian or Indian?
Canadian or Indian, I, that, I'm not familiar with that, but.
It was just in my driving, it's around, and I seen it, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, so as a real estate broker, and, um, working with what is listed, uh, buyers, what's for sale, these are affordable, and I think, um, from my point of view, we could bring in more people to this area, if we had some affordable housing. So I, I think it's, I think it's a good idea. Um, I think the location is perfect, it's not too far from the Village of Lakeview. Um, the only, I guess, concern of mine is there's already the mobile home park that.
Yeah, I mean, it's vacant.
That's, that's going in right now, it's being developed right now.
That's a lot more money, too.
Correct.
Those are a lot more money.
Correct, but that is a mobile home park, that is where the people.
They're more than a hundred and sixty thousand?
Are paying for lots, what's that?
The mobile home park, if they're going for more than a hundred and sixty thousand for a trailer home?
The park over here, you have to pay, uh, rental for the, the lot itself.
And you gotta pay for the house.
So you can bring in your houses, you can take your houses out of there.
I get all that, I just.
This is gonna be.
Affordable in a hundred and sixty thousand for a starting families, that doesn't seem affordable to me.
A hundred and forty, a hundred and sixty, I mean, that's what it's going for.
I, I get that, it doesn't mean that it's.
It's materials.
Doesn't make it affordable, it makes it market.
Right, I mean, they're sellable, I mean, if you have a thou- twelve hundred payment on a house, a small tiny home, twelve and fifteen hundred, let's say, partly because of that, you're not gaining any equity.
But that's what I'm paying on my two hundred and forty thousand dollar house now.
Yeah, lucky.
Well, I bought ten years ago.
Right, exactly.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, just because you're saying, market says it's affordable today at a hundred and sixty, doesn't make the starting family, or even the older retired couple any more affordable.
Yes.
We're using words that don't need to be there.
Well, talking to realtors, though.
I understand.
A hundred and forty, it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
It's really high right now, and interest rates are high, but.
Yeah, but it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now it's a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in two years up here. I mean, I studied the market a little bit, okay, so, but I'm gonna be building parks all over.
These are.
Homes.
These are attached to the property, they will be assessed as real property, it's gonna bring a tax base to this area.
Exactly.
Um, and I think that it would bring, you know, like you're saying, the older couple that wants to find something affordable, that they can be here six months of the year, and then go to Florida.
Yeah.
Um, and I, you know, I've talked to, I, I talk to people all the time that would love something like that. So that's the difference about what, what Randy wants to do versus what the mobile home park by Lepink's is, totally different.
Exactly.
So.
These are on a, these are on a foundation with the frost laws, you know, with forty-two inch frost laws for the footings. This would sell, I guarantee it, this would sell, it'd bring a tax base, that's what it's all about. You're gonna have couples in here that don't have any kids, that aren't gonna want kids, young couples, cause.
That's what's going on right now.
Families affordable, families are, you know, it's expensive. With the cost of the day, I mean, you gotta, you know, you buy groceries, you gotta, you gotta get a loan for your groceries almost, you gotta finance everything, Jesus, it's getting crazy. I went to the store the other day, got back in Florida, I spent three hundred dollars on like eight bags of groceries, and I'm sitting there thinking, oh my word. So it, it's expensive to live, and these kids are, kids can't buy, can't afford to buy a home today.
Well, the thing is with the mobile home park is they don't own the land that they're sitting on, so they can't finance them as a mortgage.
Exactly.
And so then they're paying like a car payment on it, and it's a lot of money, and that's what I'm trying to add, that and another five hundred dollars for the lot rent. And you have to take care of the lot yourself, it's like, seriously, a lot of money, now they have one, the Oaks of Rockford.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It's similar, but the homes are bigger.
Right.
And they're more, they're pricier.
Right, oh, yeah, yeah.
But they're nice homes.
But you're talking two hundred and fifty thousand dollar back.
Uh-huh, right.
Yeah.
And people are buying them up like crazy.
Oh, yeah, it sounds, that's already done.
Yeah, it's already done, it's a done deal, though.
Two years, they built up that whole back face, two years, and it sold out.
Right.
But that's rock.
Back to my question on sewer, though, you told me it was a community sewer, and now you're saying.
No, 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 it's, it's individuals well inseptics.
Okay, so that was my question.
Yeah, yeah.
Was he gonna have a community sewer pond, or?
No, no.
Okay.
Nope, each lot will have its own well and septic.
I wanna dig a pond, there's a pond there, there's wetlands there, and I'd like to get a permit to dig it out, where people can.
To have some green space.
Have a common area, have a cabin area, green space, and people can go down and have a little sandy beach there, people can enjoy the pond area. But these are just some thoughts I put together, uh, and for the best use of the property, uh, and I think either one of these plans would work well. I wouldn't have drawn them, anything that works, so. You wanna see some RVs on, on trailers, did I give you those?
They're over there.
The trailer ones that are slide off the trailer, I think I, let me see. I'll show you a perfect example of it. My eyes that are home, building a trailer that you can.
Marcy, have you seen, um, like a community of these?
I have not, I have not, no.
I hope you have, just, you talk about tax base, but then what is that tax base based on that community? Be interesting to see what that would be or look like.
Well, I'm, I'm assuming it would be assessed on what they sell for, I mean, they, that would be a start.
No, I understand, but I just didn't know if there was someplace local around this area, or a hundred miles from here, or whatever, that has something like this. I mean, it sounds like you haven't seen that around here.
I, I have not, no.
So why is it, I guess, devil's advocate, why is it you think this is gonna just pop and go, with that being said?
My thought was affordability. That's my thought.
There's a lot of projects like this in Florida, and I.
It's not Florida processes?
No, I know, it's Lakeview, but I'm just saying, you know, keep working on it, if you're six months, cause you got a nice area, you got a lake, you got all the amenities, hospital, shopping, everything, it's a nice little community. And this is what we're gearing towards, because it's, it's, uh, it's just affordable for young couples in the outward.
And having an association, I think that the, the, um, township would need to probably set some standards, absolutely.
Yeah, if there's not a agenda to have some guidelines when it comes to tiny houses, that's what the challenges that the board gives this year, so.
Cause what it is right now, they wouldn't even qualify to be in the township.
Correct, cause of the size, yes.
Because of the size.
Yep.
Yeah, your requirement is eight hundred square feet, that's your minimum square footage, right?
It's sixteen hundred, is, is like a double wide.
Yeah, a double wide would be, well, a double wide is wider, eight hundred square feet, more like twelve hundred square feet.
Average single wide is what, nine hundred and twenty square feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not big enough for a single wide, so we have to have a double wide.
No, I've got all these pictures here, I've got two different drawings for the different lot sizes, um, you know, I feel it would go in this area. And you've been talking about the realtors, they say they'd sell like hotcakes, and talking with some other realtors. And I mean, I can have you talk, if you want to, I can have you talk with some of the developers in Florida, and, uh, it, it, there's, everybody's moving to Florida because they can enjoy the weather year round, it's hot in the summertime, I won't live there in the summertime. But it, it's gotta be affordable for people, people, most people can't afford two hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred thousand dollar mortgages. Ten years ago, you could build a two thousand square foot house for seventy dollars a square foot, now it's a hundred dollars a square foot or more to build a house. It gets, it, it's crazy. Oh, and then they use the, the, uh, COVID is the biggest problem, that's a bunch of, whatever, whatever you wanna say.
Well, two years, well, three years ago, our biggest problem was, is there was forty-eight homes I had to get replaced in Sanford, so if you're trying to build a home then, you couldn't get anything. I know, because I built the house three years ago. Sheet plywood was, uh, fifty-six dollars.
Yeah, exactly.
Fifty-six.
Oh, yeah, big money, yeah, two quarters, that's what.
That was for three eights.
Three eights.
Sheathing, yeah.
I'm just gonna put my thoughts in here as the only senior citizen in the room next to you, Randy. But I know a lot of people that are my age, that are couples, that live in big homes, that would love to get out of their big homes, but there's no place to go.
That's right.
There is no place for them to go to downsize, to be smaller, they go to Florida for part of the winter, and they, or Texas, or wherever.
Exactly.
And come back, and they've got this big huge house that they don't even live in.
That's right.
They live in a few rooms of it, and that's it. And as a senior citizen, I can see why this thing might go.
Well, see, that's an idea to possibly have it as a senior community, too, I mean, if you, right, correct, I mean, that, that's an idea.
That's exactly right.
The next problem is, is if they wanna leave that big house, who's gonna buy it?
Well, there is, the, the housing market is hot, so there's somebody that's gonna wanna buy that house.
You know, him and her, young couple, have to each make a hundred thousand dollars a year to live comfortably and have a five thousand square foot house. And that's a lot of money.
It is.
And you take, there's a lot of companies laying on people. Big companies, so.
There's been.
The trend is, this is gonna be the trend, this is what you're gonna see a lot more, and I gotta, I gotta drive up. And I gotta, I gotta drive up there and, and see that little development, it's like, you know, like eight, ten houses as well.
I can't figure out where it's at, I.
Yeah, I'm gonna go back up there and check it out, yeah.
I've been around a lot of Canadian lakes, I don't remember.
What you're saying was.
It's on the back way to Mount Pleasant.
That's smallest square footage.
Not the back way.
What would you say is the smallest square footage of a house?
That's a planter.
Saying four fifty.
Well, four hundred and fifty square feet, yeah. Minimum. Well, it's a lot bigger than a fifth wheel motor, I, I have a forty-two foot fifth wheel, I had a big motorhome, uh, forty-two. Um, that was about, you know, it was at four slides, it was forty-two by eight. So that's three hundred and what, twenty? Plus the slide outs, that, less than four hundred square foot, a big motorhome, and big motorhomes, people living all the time in Florida, Sue can testify to that, I mean, motorhomes are a big item, fifth wheels are a big item.
They live in tiny homes too.
Yeah.
I mean, park model tiny homes.
Right, it's park models, yeah.
And I know a couple out here in Townline that lives in a park model in the summer, I don't know what they live in in the winter, it's probably something really similar.
Right, now, just, uh, a little note that now Douglas Township, they just, uh, I believe it went through the, it been approved.
That's it, Douglas, you're right.
And they have minimum, uh, square footage of a house, I think they went down to like five hundred or four forty or something, yeah. So they see it happening.
So I guess the question would be, would we be, cause we're already gonna talk about tiny homes for general provision in there, but would something like this, would you be looking to apply for like a condominium and then have your own? All the set of rules for that property specifically?
Bylaws.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So basically like a variance, like what we have for honeymoon lights.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can still.
We'd have it be bylaws and there'd be the, okay, uh, you know, you can't have any junk cars sitting around, you know, you gotta put them in a garage or whatever. Um. The thing about this is you could put a deck on the front, you could put a nice, uh, nice can of the carport over, or build a full carport. You know, you start getting kids and stuff, build a, add on to them, like, just like everybody else does. But you know, you, uh, build a nice shed, like under this carport, you can put a nice shed within the carport, you know, ahead of where you pull into the cars. Um, so, I mean, there's plenty of space, um. And, and people, that's what people are going to. I mean, I built a ten thousand square foot friggin' house, and my wife got dementia. And I had to end up selling it, it was a big timber frame, iron timber frame home in Grand Rapids. And, uh, it's way too big, I mean, you know, that's a big house, I, I can't, I'm not gonna live in there.
And one or two rooms of it.
Yeah, I mean. It's crazy.
I don't know, something to think about because I think it's something that could work. But it goes against all.
Oh, I'm convinced, and I can get you, I can get you some pictures of some of the parks in Florida with tiny homes. I mean, it's, it, you think builders can keep up?